Okay, Linda, we don't have any communications on the agenda. Has there been anything since?
There was one email this morning from a, you know, I put it on the next agenda, actually, from Ms. Jeanne Blevins thanking the board for approving.
Message sent.
Mrs. Fedka?
Yep, thank you. All right, and so this is, and for our new student reps, tonight is our voting session. So last week was our workshop session where we just get together and talk about our agenda items. And tonight, we will actually be voting on things. So number eight is the first item that we will vote on, which is correction to the minutes. Corrections are in bold, August 21st, under personnel. We have one correction. I'm not going to bother reading that in. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that one? Nope. So can I get a motion to adopt number eight? So moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Linda, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
I have to abstain, not having been here.
Mr. Magziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dean Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietravono?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Okay, and then agenda item number nine, approval of minutes for the regular public as corrected, executive session meeting minutes for August 21st, and the special public and executive session meetings for August 28th. Is there, can I get a motion to approve those? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Nope. Okay, Linda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Abstain.
Mr. Magziner?
Yeah, I actually should have abstained as well to eight, and I will for nine, because I did not attend on the 21st.
And actually, we've run into this in the past, and we've been advised by council, just because you're not here, you don't have to abstain on minutes, because we've been in situations where-
Well, I did review the video.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was fantastic.
Exactly. So you don't ever have to abstain-
The video was good. I'd like to change my vote on both of that. I did see the, from my trip, I did see the videos. So I'll change my vote to yes. Thank you, Darcy.
Now you guys got to let everyone know how conscientious we are. Even when we're not here, we watch our own videos.
I was near Anchorage, Alaska, watching you guys.
Wow. Okay, now that takes it to another level.
Mark, you know how to party.
It's a little sad, but, yeah.
It was hard.
So, Mr. Magziner, are you also changing your vote, or are you?
No, no, no. I will, I'll say yes.
You'll say yes?
Yeah, no abstention, for either.
All right. Ms.-
I've learned something new, so thank you. Thank you, Darcy.
Okay, moving on. Ms. McFadden, Dean Nicola?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Pietravono?
Yes.
Mr. Rosowitz?
Yes.
Okay, so that will bring us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask that you and Ann move, so that you're not in the line of my laser projector. And I'd like to invite Ms. Maureen, Mrs. Maureen Rexer, to the center to join me in presenting about the strategic plan. Those of you who don't know Ms. Rexer, Mrs. Rexer, she is one of our middle school language arts teachers, and also wears the hat of dean of restorative practices. She is RP, she's restorative practices. She's actually the most comprehensively trained, practiced, piloted, implemented, restorative practiser in our district, and she's been going around to different schools, helping others pilot, trial, restorative practices on their own.
Our schools, you mean, not other schools out of the district? You've been going around to our schools? Okay, okay.
But she's based in the middle school. And for those of you who are not aware of how she balances these two acts, she teaches part-time, and she is dean part-time. So, this all ties into the strategic plan. When, in 2016, June, the community got together and identified the core areas upon which we wanted to focus, one of them was making sure that we are providing all of our kids opportunities, equitable opportunities, to succeed. And under F1, Focus Area 1, which we now call Success for All, are two goals. The first has to do with ASCD, the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development's Whole Child Initiative. And I love that graphic, if you can see it, because it really breaks out what it means to focus on the whole child. To me, because we fixate so much in this country on intellectual growth, academic growth, it means a lot of our need to balance that out with social-emotional support. And so, the other goal that we fit under our focus area, Success for All, had to do, this is the second goal, G1.2, had to do with us promoting cultural competency, being more culturally responsive. And the reason why I'm presenting both of these goals, there are three total goals. The third goal has to do with supporting the community, helping parents, providing them whatever resources they need to help their kids. Reason why I'm presenting these two is because, to me, restorative practices is almost like the foundation of the entire focus area. It does it all, in many ways. It's not just about circle conferences, which you'll understand better in just a couple of minutes. It's about a whole culture shift. And I've invited Maureen here, she actually volunteered to come, and then I invited her to actually join me, is because I'm, what I'd like to do is just dabble a little bit into various slides, and then give the mic to Maureen, who knows so much more than I do about restorative practices, to explain exactly what's happening on the ground. First thing you should know, however, is that we have been thoroughly training staff and leadership team members on restorative practices. May 8th to 11th, we invited 12 teachers, something like 12?
Eleven.
Eleven teachers to be trained for four days. We brought somebody in from the International Institute for Restorative Practices to Bartle School. And these are the teachers, and counselors, and teen center people who represent middle and high school. In July, the 25th and the 26th, the leadership team was trained by the same organization, different person, same organization. The leadership team focused more on how to support the teachers, and how to effect culture change. August 21st and 23rd, those same 11 teachers came back to school. We brought IIRP in again. And they were trained more so in techniques that would lead them to train their peers, which they ended up doing on September 6th and 7th. All of the middle and high school teachers were trained by these 11 turnkey trainers. So now, we're going to get into the nuts and bolts, and this is where I'm going to pass the mic off to Ms. Rexer. What I hope you can get out of this presentation tonight is a sense that restorative practices, as I said earlier, is more than just having these circle conferences. That's a big part of it, but it's really about systemic change. And one of the things that I'd like Maureen to talk about a little bit is how we're applying something called the social discipline window, so if you want to comment on that.
Thanks. And before I get started with that, I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to do this, because I think it's been an amazing journey for me, and I'm seeing so many positive changes, so I appreciate your support in this. I'm just going to backtrack real quick. When people think of, especially staff members, restorative practices, they're always thinking of replacing disciplinary measures with alternatives, which does have a piece to it, but what I've been trying to really work with the staff, and myself and other trainers, is to understand that restorative practices is more of a mindset in the way that you deal with students, and deal with other people in general. You can take this outside of the classroom, and to look at it more like a toolkit, and that there's different tools that we could use to make it a more positive, successful learning environment for students. So, right here, what you see in front of you is kind of the catchphrase for restorative practices, and if you Google it, this would definitely pop up. The main foundation of restorative practices is that students are going to be, any people in general are happier, more successful, more productive, when people in positions of authority do things with them, as opposed to to them, or for them, or just completely neglect to do it in general. So, this is a really helpful tool for us as staff members, to kind of think about, when we're handling students, and we're handling situations, where are we in that window? And even as parents or as family members, I'm sure that we've all been in one of those other boxes at a time. I'm sure that in a heat of frustration, you can say that you've probably done something to somebody, you've said, "That's it, you're going to your room," which doesn't necessarily give them the support to change, it just kind of gives them a consequence without anything to kind of go off of or learn from. We've all been in the not or neglectful, most of the time that happens when we are frustrated or overwhelmed, and we kind of back away from things. From a teacher's perspective, you never want to be in that box. Your job is to work with the students, and if you have, if you can see on the two different sides, you can see that being in the not box is very low control, but it's also very low support, and the students aren't really going to get anything out of that. The for box is when you're really, really supportive of somebody, maybe you really love this student, and you want them to be successful, so you just are helping them, you're giving them too much help, but that's really not helping them either. So, our goal is to be as much as possible, and it's never going to be 100% in that with box, where we're providing them with boundaries, and a good sense of discipline and expectations, but also supporting them at the same time. So, one of the tools that we're working together as a staff is, as we're working, in our daily activities, as things come and go in the insanity of a day, reflecting on where am I right now? And taking a step back to, before you go and do something, like, are you in the to box? Are you helping them, or are you just doing things for them? So that's kind of where that box is being used as a tool with us. Other tools that we have, my favorite one is the top one there, we're using affective statements to help build empathy. They're kind of like I statements, if you're familiar with them. Something that we're all working on really, really hard, is when we're talking to students, or even talking to one another, using feeling terms, as awkward as it might be to get adjusted to, instead of just telling something to a student. And a perfect example would be, "Why would you throw that?" Or, "Why would you do something?" And instead, shifting the way that you're reacting to a student, and saying, "I feel very unsafe when you do that." Or, instead of "Stop talking over me," it might be, "I feel distracted when you say something like that." It really helps to model having effective means of communications for the students. Most adults I know don't even speak like that, so you can imagine that students that don't, maybe don't have that modeled for them at home, it's really, really, really helpful for them to be able to start thinking, how are things making them feel, how are they making other people feel, and looking at people as human beings, especially teachers, that actually have feelings. And it starts to help them build the skills of empathy that need to be fostered in students. The restorative questions, that's a set of five questions, that when you're handling conflicts, and they can be big conflicts or small conflicts, they work the student through the process of processing what happened either to them, or what they did to somebody else. The questions involve them thinking about what they were thinking at the time, what they said, or what they did, who was affected by the things that they've done, and what can be done, or what needs to be done, to undo the harm that they have, that they have either incurred upon themselves, or have had done to them. It's a very structured set of five questions. The benefit of using them, especially from a staff perspective, is that we all have common language, and as the more and more staff gets to use them on a regular basis, the students will become used to saying them, and used to really processing situations. Instead of doing something wrong, getting in trouble, and moving on, they have to actually stop, think about what they've done, really think about who's been affected by what's been happening, and then actually start to think about what they potentially could do to undo the harm that they've done. So it's, you can see the shift in thinking there is from, you're going to be given a consequence, to coming up with your own consequences. The next one is recognizing that we all experience and react to trauma differently. That trauma can be huge, it can be small. The main piece there, from a restorative mindset, is that we need to keep in mind that people react to different things. It could be something small, like they slept in through their alarm, or it could be something huge, like they don't have enough to eat ever. But we all experience things differently, and that kind of affects our behavior. So, from a teaching standpoint, we're asking staff members to think, and really separate the deed from the doer, so to speak, where they're thinking to themselves, there's a reason this student is acting this way, and how can I handle that based upon that knowledge? Fair process is allowing students to have a voice within the classroom, and that, to me, I think is really important about the restorative practices. Students are very used to being told what to do, what the rules are, and I think that as we are creating people to go out into the world, and young adults, allowing them to have a voice, and be able to establish what they need, and what they feel, and get the things that they want in a positive way, that's really, really an important skill for the students to have at this point. And then finally, establishing community norms, is asking everybody, again, going along with that whole idea of having a voice, what do we need to make this a successful learning environment for all of us? So these are all different tools that teachers are attempting to use throughout the day. This piece here, incorporating circles into classes, is I think what people, most people think of when they think of restorative practices, is sitting in a circle. Most of our staff has not been trained in formatting their own circles. They know that sitting in a circle allows for a sense of community, it allows for no barriers, it allows for every student to have a voice. We're looking forward to, throughout the school year, really training staff in different ways to foster the most productive circles. At this point in time, our social studies department is piloting the circles in their classes, and they are kind of using them as they see fit. They can be used in a million different ways, and our trained staff members are using them to start units of study, they're using them to address problems as they occur, they're using them even for their own knowledge, kind of as checkpoints, from a teacher's perspective. So the circles are definitely happening in social studies. I've seen them happening in various other classes, not as formal as the social studies department, but definitely as a way of creating a sense of community within their classes. So that's where we are at.
So, the leadership team has agreed that we would rely on the 11 teachers who are trained more comprehensively than their peers, when having to facilitate what are referred to as reactive circles. Circles that will help restore a child, a student, to the community if he or she has done harm. So for instance, if a student hits another student, and is disciplined, we would make sure to follow up the disciplinary action with a reactive circle, which would likely involve the student, anybody who he did, or she did harm to, could be a teacher, could be another student, and Ms. Rexer, correct me if I'm wrong, but it might also involve the student's parents, the student who did the harms' parents, or guardians. But it would be the 11 people who were trained initially that would help facilitate those reactive circles. Right now, Mrs. Rexer has been the one to do that, but since we now have 11 others, we'll have 12 people in both schools to whom we could rely.
Just on that note, again, going back to that whole idea of disciplinary actions, and we all know that suspending students is the most ineffective way to handle many situations. In those situations where it's necessary for the safety of another student, and that might happen, that's obviously depending upon the administrative decision there, but the important piece from a restorative standpoint is to make sure that after they are coming back into the setting, that they have an opportunity to restore the community, and have a conversation, and feel welcomed back in. Again, the idea is, maybe you weren't with us for a day, but we welcome you back, we want you back, and this is how we're going to make it the most positive. So that's really where those restorative, those reactive circles would come in.
I forgot to point out that another individual who'll be trained in October up in Jersey City by IIRP, they go around the region, actually throughout the country, and they do trainings everywhere, but in October, they'll be in Jersey City. Another person who'll be trained is Glenn Curtis, who supervises the in-school suspension program. We only will use in-school suspension in the most serious disciplinary infractions. We are trying to drastically scale back punitive discipline, especially out-of-school suspension, but he will be trained in restorative practices as well. So, not only will he be able to facilitate reactive circles, but he'll be able to incorporate the language, and the routine, and even the culture of the community of in-school suspension, so it's more supportive, and more rehabilitative. More rehabilitative, that's the word. So, that's it, unless there's anything else you want to share, Mrs. Rexer? Questions for the board?
Yeah, in relation to the circles within social studies, is that across multiple grade levels? And then also, does it have any impact on instructional time?
That's an excellent question, and one of our main concerns when we thought about incorporating this into the curriculum, our main goal was that curriculum would not suffer as a result of having circles in the classroom. As of right now, the seventh and eighth grade teachers, the seventh grade social studies teacher and the eighth grade teacher are both trained in restorative circles. The sixth grade teacher will be trained shortly. At this point in time, they're finding ways to infuse it into the curriculum, so that they're not missing anything. If I can, I'll give you a perfect example. In seventh grade, last week, I sat in on a circle that was the beginning of a unit, and the teacher used that opportunity to ask students what they already know about this unit, what's something that they're interested in learning about this unit, and it really kind of just was seamless, in the sense of every student got a chance to talk, and the magic part about it was that the teacher now knows what he might not have to teach, because the whole class already knows what something might be, what he definitely needs to teach, and he also has a good feeling of what students want to learn, on top of what he would have already taught. So he's using that situation to kind of get the whole class as a community, springboarding them into the unit. So that's kind of where they're taking it for right now.
Thank you.
Just one question. There was a point when we were, when the middle school, the new middle school schedule was presented to us, we were told that night that there was a possibility that circles were going to happen in Phys Ed classes, and I remember being excited that it would make the Phys Ed class a little smaller, if kids were leaving to do a circle, or whatever.
Yeah.
So that's no longer something that-
Sure. That's definitely still on the table. It's a matter of, with one of me, and 300-plus students to pull out of Phys Ed, it's a scheduling issue for me right now, and finding a way to navigate that, and still have to, and still dealing with the situations, like the day-to-day things that arise, on top of the classes, my classes that I teach in the morning. So it's definitely still on the table. I've actually been working with Mrs. O to think of if Phys Ed can't be pulled out with other spaces that I might be able to work in to it also. So it's definitely still on the table, as our, probably our main place, the most effective way we could probably pull students out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Regarding, oh, regarding, I guess, classroom management models that are being used at Irving and Bartle Schools, slightly different, can you describe how they may lead into the restorative classrooms?
Mine, I'm not sure exactly what the, I know we're in responsive classroom in Bartle still, you can explain.
Okay, so they're using the responsive classroom model now in all classrooms, pre-K5, and it's very similar to restorative practices. And you've probably noticed when you walk through the halls at Irving, the mantras, the signs, "Be kind." They are working on language, they refer to students as friends, not as boys, girls. And the meetings replicate the circle conferences in many ways. So, our kids should be able to go from pre-K to 5, and then jump right into some of the circle conferences, and then understand the language. Language might be different, but it's all about the same thing.
And all of those teachers are trained in the-
Responsive classroom, yes.
Wow, all of the Irving and Bartle? Wow, it's really good, okay.
Yes, we've been training all of our K5 teachers after school last year, we continue that in September. Our special subject teachers were just trained by Kelly Freeborn, so they can incorporate morning meeting K5 in their classrooms.
Okay, great. Along those notes, in the middle school, where I know where they come from, coming from Bartle, where they have established rules that they're, you know, we're working on friendship, we're working on respect, taking that into the middle school level, that's where kind of establishing those norms comes in, where we ask the students to come up on their own with what do we need as a group to be most successful. So we're kind of asking them to put a little bit more of that on themselves, and what they need now is growing learners. But one thing that I do know that responsive classroom uses, that I'm using, and many teachers are also, is just that daily check-in, with, when we see them in the morning, I might, I start all my classes with a real quick go-around of, "Tell me how you're feeling this morning," and they can elaborate it on if they want, but I think it's a good moment for them to say, "I'm excited today, because I'm doing something," or, you know, "Yesterday I was really upset, but now I'm, today I'm feeling better." So, we use that kind of in the same way that responsive classroom uses their morning circles.
Makes their feelings count.
Yes. Yeah, it does, absolutely. And I think, this morning, actually, today's Monday, yeah. This morning, we were talking about how are we feeling, but what's a goal that we have for our Wednesday meeting, but it would be our Friday morning meeting too, so.
Kind of, oh, sorry. Ann, you go. All right. Mine is a quick, like, uncomfortable question. Is there any resistance that you're finding in the district to this way of thinking? Is it unfortunate that some people are not getting it, or do you find that it's generally-
From the staff perspective?
From everyone, from the staff and the students. I would imagine some of the students would have put up resistance, like, "This is really, you know, this is really fluff."
That's a really, no, that's actually an excellent question. I will tell you that in the summertime when we met, the 11 or 12 of us, that was our main concern, was, we were like, "What about the naysayers? What about the people who we think are just not going to, you know, it's too touchy-feely, or it's too fluffy?" I was shocked at how very, very few and far between that has taken place so far, from the staff members. And I'm looking at it, I have talked to, I've trained many high school staff, I'm looking at it mainly from a middle school perspective, because that's what I live in. I can't tell you how everybody is, has really, really, truly jumped on board. And the kids, I haven't heard anything negative from the kids. What I have tried to tell the staff members, going along that whole idea of the restorative toolkit, is, if you're not comfortable doing a circle right now, because it's new to you, or maybe it's just not you, you're not a touchy-feely, sit in a circle, you know, talk about how you're feeling person, then use the affective statements. Use something that is authentic to who you are as a person and as a teacher, and I think that makes a big difference, because if a teacher or anybody does something that is inauthentic, the kids will pick up on that. So I think that the staff has really, really heard that, and are using what is, for right now, the most comfortable for them, and going from there. So I think that that has really helped with the pushback.
And it really helps that we had teachers training peers, as opposed to leaders, or breaking somebody from outside who is not as trusted-
Sure.
-as peers.
Awesome, thank you. You're welcome.
Hi, excuse me, I have a little bit of cold. I know when we started talking about which sort of social-emotional model to consider adopting, we talked about, you know, positive behavioral supports, and one thing people were concerned about was not just having it be a reactive disciplinary thing.
Right.
And we heard a lot about how these restorative circles, not the reactive circles, but the sort of, I'm not sure what the name is for the ones that are not in reaction to an event.
They're proactive.
Proactive.
And community building, but, yeah.
Proactive circles, that that was very important to do on a regular basis. I mean, how does that look? In social studies, it sounds like there was a good conversation about what, you know, people already know, what they'd like to know. How does that get into, like, community norms and feelings? Seems like it's a social, really good discussion, but not really directed at-
The social issues.
Yeah, the social issues.
Absolutely. There are some school districts who use, I guess, advisory periods, and there, they have even student-run circles that are specifically geared towards community-building, social-emotional issues. That's something that we'd still have to work to build into the schedule, and that's kind of where we were saying, if I was going to pull groups of students, and I would run groups that would be specifically geared towards more social-emotional life skills, kind of, emotional life skills. The important thing, I think, with the circles, is that because of the format, and because of the nature where everybody has a voice in the circle, it almost doesn't matter necessarily what you're talking about.
Okay.
It kind of allows for all students to be a part of the conversation, even if it is about ancient Rome, just the feeling of having a voice, and having your voice respected and heard, makes a big difference in building community and building empathy. They share a lot of stories in these circles, even if it is related to whatever the content area is, but they share stories that they wouldn't otherwise hear from each other in the cafeteria. So that in and of itself, I think, is really important in the community building.
That sounds wonderful.
Even if it's not geared towards a quote-unquote, you know, social-emotional issue, so to speak.
I mean, I don't even know, sort of, like, to me, it sounds kind of uncomfortable, sitting around talking about social-emotional issues, however, I mean, it was sort of built to us as like a really important component of this, that we not sort of make restorative practices just like another kind of suspension, you know? "Oh, no suspension, we're just going to have reactive circles now."
Yeah.
What's the big difference? So I'm concerned that we don't have room in the schedule for maybe these sort of, I mean, I had, I guess I had thought, based on what, I don't know, maybe just the grapevine, that we were going to sort of do every week in social studies, we were going to have these pro- have these proactive, pre-reactive circles, you know, dealing specifically with community building. And so that's not happening anymore? That, that's not what's...
I can explain. What we decided with that is, I think you had just said that it would feel uncomfortable sitting there, like, you know, talking about your feelings all the time.
That's just because I'm new to this, not because I think it's a bad thing.
But I think that that's really important, because the students are new to this and the staff is new to this. So I think our mindset was, rather than go zero to 100 and have kids burn out, because there are some students who even, for them to even talk in front of their peers, even if it's an answer, answer a question about social studies, for them to talk in front of their peers is enough for them emotionally than, rather than have to actually sit there and talk about things that are actually really, truly emotional. So our concern was, if you do it too much, too heavy at once, then you would get a lot of kids to kind of pull back. We decided that just working it slowly into the schedule, I think, is gonna get kids more comfortable slowly, rather than throw it in their face, you know, full-fledged.
That sounds, I absolutely hear that. Scott, do we have a plan for how it'll be slow but steadily? Because I do think at some point, we probably want to move toward like explicit discussion of like the issues that confront us as a community, you know, respect for one another. I mean, although that feels uncomfortable to me, I think it should be done, and it does seem like that's what the restorative, you know, the IIRP or whatever talks a lot about.
So when I met with the 11 teachers, some of the 11 teachers, I don't think everybody was present, in the middle school about two weeks ago, Maureen was there, Jennifer Osemier, Mike Losser, Caitlin Brady. I went in guns blazing, saying, you know, "All right, we're gonna do this, it's gonna happen every week."
Right, right, that's what I thought, yeah.
But I was very effectively persuaded by what, some of the things you just heard tonight.
Okay.
And on top of that, the need for me to slow things down and make sure that this is grassroots and everybody feels ownership over it and feels comfortable with it before perhaps the next stage, which could be next year, when we do build into the schedule, something in the morning when kids walk in the door or on Fridays at the high school. But, but I don't think we're there yet. I mean, I'm still, you know, one of my responsibilities is to make sure that my leadership team is doing the same for the teachers. And so when we were trained, for instance, in July, one of the things we all agreed we would do at faculty meetings is open up our meetings with something called a gratitude circle. So at faculty meetings, principals are going to have everybody take a turn around the circle to express something that they're gracious, that they feel gratitude for. This is a little routine that we're building into the system so that slowly the principals inculcate the same kind of culture with the teachers, and that's gonna take some time.
And before we, we're not there with the students yet, with doing something as sort of explicitly emotional as gratitudes.
IIRP, IIRP has a reason for wanting to spend three years with us.
Okay, all right.
Because it doesn't happen in one.
Okay.
They are, incidentally, gonna be visiting us on a monthly basis. We haven't decided how we're gonna use their clinicians yet, whether we're gonna have them pull out teachers for extra support or have them observe classes and circles that are happening and then give feedback.
So I think that's a really important point, especially for the board to understand that IR, you know, our, our involvement with IR, IIRP is not all of a sudden suddenly ended in like, "Okay, you guys are now on your own, you know, new restorative practices." You guys will be getting constant feedback from them for quite some time to really make sure that this program doesn't, you know, stall out here, you know, which would be not what we want.
But understandable, you know.
I, when we went to Brooklyn last fall, I guess, that school, you walk in and it's just like this amazing restorative community, and they have a period that they call CREW, which is an advisory, and you think that it's just this like well-oiled, like, perfect restorative community, and that everybody respects everybody, and when you actually talk to them, it's their fifth year in the program. So if you actually have a conversation with them, they'll tell you that it took lots of time and lots of energy. And from, from my perspective, because it's something that I'm so passionate about now, it's, it's really hard for me to sit back and say like, "It's gonna take a year or two." It is, just because it's a cultural shift in everybody's, in everybody's mindset, the teachers, the students, so it is hard to kind of like, wait, I know, it's so hard. But it does, any school, any school that really is doing it and doing it well, it has, it takes, there's like a decent amount of time that it, that it does take to kind of really roll through and, and make it, and make it work well. But I will tell you what I've, what I love the most about working with the staff and also working with the administration is that everybody has, and the board also, everybody has that same notion of, "We don't want this to fall flat, we don't want it to be like a dead initiative." But I'm hearing that from everybody, which to me is the best thing I could possibly hear. None of us want it to fall flat. So that's the only thing that's keeping me from also having guns blazing.
Well, and I think it really helps for us to hear from you and to hear that same, like, passion for it, that we're hoping eventually, you know, trickles down everywhere, because, I mean, from the board's perspective, I think I can speak for the board, I mean, we feel really passionately about this as well, and we're really looking forward to seeing that culture shift within our schools, so.
I can...
Thank you for that. Thank you for bringing so much energy to it, it's wonderful.
Just what I've learned is every day that there's like one small moment, the end of the day today, I did a conference with a teacher and a student, and it, just that one conversation where the teacher said, you know, like, "This happened last Friday," and I took that home, and I, I yelled at my kids when I got home, and I was frustrated, and then my wife and I got into an argument, and it's because I was, you, you know, you treated me in a way that you've never treated me before, and I felt really disrespected. And just that moment where that kid was like, "Hmm."
Wow.
Like, but those are the moments that like, it's one piece at a time. So that, that's really going on, which is exciting to me, even if it's one 20-minute conversation.
Just one quick question. Are we planning any way to integrate our...
Ruth, make sure you're really close to your mic.
Sorry, I hate that. Are we planning any way to integrate like our Week of Respect and our anti-bullying activities with our restorative practices? Because I think they really go hand in hand. The community building is what prevents, in the end, the bullying and the teasing and things like that.
Yeah, but...
I mean, we haven't, we haven't put the two together, but obviously, whatever we're doing with Week of Respect is gonna support the restorative practices model, but there's no harm in me going back to the guidance councils who are mostly responsible for Week of Respect.
It'd be nice to see them, you know, the restorative practices and the toolkit things integrated into the, you know, every activity that's planned. And I think the Week of Respect and the activities that we're supposed to do following that are important enough and are supposed to be, you know, happening on a frequent basis, that if we put them together, it sort of changes that culture also at the same time. Does that make sense?
Totally. I mean, ultimately, I want every board member, parent, guardian, student, teacher, to walk into the school and feel good, feel like this is a nurturing, supportive environment. It's what we felt, or I felt, when I went to Brooklyn. And, you know, I walked up the stairs, even though it was this big, old, kind of cold building, you walk inside and you can feel the culture. And remember how this whole thing started, two years ago, when we gathered Sharice Richardson and Justin Burton, and I'm not sure if you were there, Maureen, we had a couple of teachers talking about discipline equity, and that's when we talked about restorative practices. And then the next year, we codified it in our strategic plan, and here we are. So it's a step, I mean, I hope you've seen the evolution of this over time, it's just gonna keep evolving. Any last words?
I just want to second what Ruth said, I think it's a great idea. And coming from a family that did not speak to each other with respect, I feel personally grateful that my kids get to be, you know, growing up different, you know, along with their peers. It's a great culture shift, I'm really excited.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes my report.
All righty. And thank you, thank you again so much for coming and sharing all of that with us. I noticed we don't have a student report on the agenda tonight. Did you guys have anything that you wanted to, that you presented, I don't know how that got left off?
Yeah, no, we have some stuff from the different principals and from the high school.
Okay, wonderful. I'm so sorry, I don't know how that got left off the agenda, but we did not, we'll let that go by.
Okay, so we can start at Irving. Irving saw a successful start to their school year. On the first day, they met as a school for their first whole-school meeting. Ms. Freeborn went over all of Irving's rules, and also they sang some songs, it was pretty fun. And in addition, Irving Back-to-School Night is going to be September 27th at 6:30 p.m. And on October 3rd at 7:00 p.m. is their PTO meeting. Ms. Freeborn wanted to mention that you guys, everyone should come and join them. And then in Bartle, they started with a Bartle pep rally, which was a huge success. The new second graders were received with the best welcome ever. In addition, just some facts about Bartle, it was recently ranked number 70, number 75 for most diverse elementary schools out of 1,546 schools throughout New Jersey by Neach.com. Bartle was also recently ranked in the top 20% of best elementary schools out of 1,400 throughout NJ. It also, it also holds its, held its first responsive epic classroom, school-wide meeting to get the school's social and emotional learning underway, and it was a huge success, according to Mr. Benjamin. Bartle will also have a 50th birthday celebration party on September 26th at 6:00 p.m. Their Back-to-School Night will be held on the same night at 6:30. And Bartle will be re-engaging the new HP Bike Rodeo held on September 27th at 4:00 p.m. in the Bartle parking lot. Bartle Run for Fun and Student Council interest meetings have secured hundreds of students in attendance, and Mrs. Kirk will be engaging the Bartle, the Bartle Buddies and Lunch Bunch Initiative within the coming weeks, and the students are super excited about that.
There's not much to report from the middle school, they've been getting used to their new schedule and getting back into the rhythm of the school year with classes and all that. And then similarly, at the high school, we're adapting to a new schedule. It's been a little hard to remember class times and how the days rotate, but it's getting easier each day. And like we said at the last meeting, people who get to come in late really, really enjoy that, and they feel like they show up much more ready to focus, so I think that's a huge positive. The sports teams are doing absolutely wonderful, except the football team, who lost their first game on Friday, but other than that, boy soccer is 6-0, girls tennis is 6-1, girl soccer is 5-0, and cross-country just won their first match against Matouchin. Last Friday, as you all know, the football stadium was named after Joseph "Paul" Castro. It was very moving to see such an important part of the Highland Park sports community honored there. We also had our first round of class meetings on Friday during the first block period. Students got updates on fundraising, other events, and all the class officers for each of the grades were elected. And student congress elections are this Wednesday, right before the four-day weekend, so candidates will give speeches during an assembly, and then students will vote for the president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary. And finally, all over the high school right now, you can see tons of posters advertising different kinds of club meetings, you know, whether that be Environmental Club, Key Club, Red Cross, Model UN, DECA, the newspaper, I mean, the list goes on and on. And we think it's a real testament to how much students at Highland Park participate and care about making changes, both in the Highland Park community and in the world, that so many of our students are actively involved in all these different organizations. And we look forward to, you know, informing you guys of all the great things they do this year, you know, which will include countless hours of volunteering, another trip to Mexico for the Model UN team, green challenges from the Environmental Club, and lots of other stuff.
Great. Thank you so much, I'm glad we didn't skip over that, that would have been not good. So if we ever miss something, just, you know, flag me down over there if I don't catch it for whatever reason, but it should typically be on the agenda. And my apologies to both of you that it wasn't there. So we will move on to board committee reports. We'll start with curriculum and instruction, Michelle?
I am going to send it over to Ruth, she was...
Oh, right, 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 I'm so sorry.
Right, so...
Thank you, Ruth.
I am totally not prepared.
You're more prepared than I am.
I would read Mr. Losser's letter on the high school schedule. Okay, so I went over the committee meeting last week, so can I skip that part?
Yeah.
We're good. Okay, so on the agenda, we have approval of field trip requests.
Ruth, just get close to your mic. If we're not right on it, I don't think people can hear us at home. At home, they definitely can't.
Okay, see, I'm short now. All the way off the seat.
You can take it off, too.
Okay, so on the agenda, we have approval of field trip requests, number one. Number two, we have approval of our HIB incident report for May. And then number three is approval of our HIB incident for June. Number four, we have teaching internships and practicum. Number five, handle with care training, which is happening this week. Number six, more handle with care training, September 26th, and that is that.
I'd like to add one point. Tomorrow, the board is gonna receive an email with a link to a drive folder on the Google Drive of all the updated curricula that was rewritten over the summer. That'll happen tomorrow, it's quite a bit of reading material, but you have until October 16th until we, I put it on the agenda for a vote. Don't forget, on October 9th, I will have Dr. Nacozia and Mrs. Ackley here, so if you have any questions about those revisions, feel free to ask. The only documents that I'm not sending you are the K5 health curricula and the personal wellness and fitness elective curriculum. I'm still looking at those. I've sent them back for additional comments, so I'll get that to you as soon as it's done.
Okay. Does anybody have any, any, any questions for Ruth on the curriculum items?
Not necessarily for Ruth, because it's the field trip request for approval, but looking at the third one in there for the high school to the convention center, which I think is for the chamber orchestra, and right now it's listed as having the expenses would be funded by the cars, the travel would be funded by the cars, but it's during a school day.
Correct, that's during the school board's convention, so what's, is there a concern?
My concern is that if it's during the weekday and most parents work, how are the kids actually gonna be able to attend this event?
Ms. Fang has been arranging for that transportation, so I know that she does have parents who'll be able to drive them down to Atlantic City.
Okay.
There is an addendum to the curriculum agenda that I'd like to note, you should have received a copy of it, it has to do with our anti, anti-bullying self-assessment. It's a, a report that we have to fill out each year, which we discuss training and what we've done in that area, so I'm placing that on the agenda for your review. Has to be sent to the Department of Ed September 30th.
Did anyone get it? I mean, I honestly, I did not see it in the drive, I have not laid eyes on it.
I didn't either, actually, I just, I read it before, when we first walked in, I noticed, "Oh, there's an addendum." I did not realize, so that was the first I saw.
You mean the actual self-assessment?
Yeah.
Or, no, I saw the...
It is on there, it's, I found it, well, you know, I looked late, I looked later in the afternoon, maybe it was recently put on there?
So, I mean, can we ask if something like this comes up, you specifically draw our attention to it, because I don't think anyone's looked at it.
Okay, absolutely.
It's very hard for us to adopt, approve something that we haven't seen.
Yes, it is.
Absolutely.
So can we, I mean, I...
Would you, are you requesting to table it until October?
Yeah, I mean, because nobody's seen it, but...
Can you, I think it's important for the board to have a good reading and understanding of the report, so if we have to work through that, we will, I'm okay with it.
What does that, what does that mean, though, to...
It, it's a CUSAC issue. It's not going to mean that we're not, that we are deemed ineffective unless we swore poorly in all other areas, like curriculum, personnel, government. So if you want to table it, we can table it.
Do we get any credit for eventually filling it out, like, filling it out late, or do we just sort of fail that portion of the CUSAC?
I'm sorry?
Do we get any credit for filling it out, you know?
Probably not, well, yeah.
We might as well just like not do it at all?
Our record will be, our score will be recorded on the Department of Education's website.
Oh, I see.
Every year, the Department of Ed does publish these self-assessments. Remember, it's a self-assessment, it's not a external assessment, so, you know, how, with what fidelity districts conduct this, it's, you know, all 600 districts do it on their own. But I, look, if we table it, it's quite, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, that would be my strong preference, because I don't like voting on things I haven't looked at.
I'm only concerned when I heard Linda say something about us getting zeros on some report, because we got it in late.
CUSAC, the CUSAC report.
Well, no, it wouldn't give us, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be our whole CUSAC report, It would be this section of the CUSAC.
Maybe we could get an extension. If, could we request an extension?
I'll work it out. I think it's more important that the board feel comfortable, in light of all the discussions we've had about HIB with the report itself.
Absolutely.
So I will tend to that, and I'll report back to the board what my findings are.
All right. Does anybody else have any other questions about anything on there? Okay, you guys are, I hate to do this, but in thinking about our discussion in closed about the HIB report, I thought of one additional item that we did not address, that I think it's important that we address. I ran it by Ann, she agrees, that she thinks it's important that we address it. So at this point, I would like to ask for everyone's permission to very quickly, very, 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 very quickly, for us to recess into closed for, you know, no more than 10 minutes, and then come back out into public so we can deal with this one just very specific issue related to one of the HIB reports that's on our agenda tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so if everybody's okay with that, can I get a motion to adjourn into closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will be right back.
No, I'm good.
Thank you, appreciate it. Checking to, yeah, we got a camera ready? Okay. Can I get a motion to reconvene to public session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your patience. So we will move on to our finance and facilities report.
Okay, so we have some additions here. Numbers three, five, six, seven, and eight are new. Items nine and 10 are the actual outlay of the unanticipated money to specific buckets, so various tuitions and athletic transportation and health benefits and so on. Those are all outlined in nine, and then a handful of others are outlined in 10, which we had to do, or put the money into the 2018-19 school year. And that was it for new items. Also, there was one, let me just see. No, that's really it. Those are the, those are the items that are new. The others we went over last week.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns for Mark?
I have a question. So when we're looking at the appropriate, like, number 10?
Yes.
When we're looking at the amount funded for maintenance projects, is that earmarked for maintenance projects, or is that just sort of a, a number that might fluctuate slightly, but...
It might fluctuate slightly. Linda has told us that there are rules governing moving this from one bucket to the other. So if, for instance, I'm going to pick one, teacher salaries, $65,000, that, you know, we're anticipating additional teacher salaries. If we don't use that, we can move it, but I think we may be limited to where we can move it. We can't just move it anywhere we like.
Okay, but this is based on everything that we've talked about in the past, everything we anticipate moving forward, but it's not necessarily tied to a specific expense right now?
It's, some of them are. We know, yeah, we know that there are some specific, I'll give you an example. The, in item nine, the last item, health benefits, $90,000.
Right.
That's because the state underestimated or gave us...
The wrong amount.
Early, too early estimates of the increase in health benefits, costs. And that underestimate by the state is what we based our budget on. It was $90,000 too low. That money is going to be spent on that, on that line item. Some of the others, the attendance and social work salary, that's another one that we know is going to be spent.
Okay.
But some of them, some of them are guesses, you know, we think very good guesses based on things that have come up.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. If nobody else has any questions for Mark, we'll move on to personnel. Judy?
Okay. We have a few new things on the agenda as well, so I'm going to highlight those. Number three is the resignation of a lunch para at Irving School, Sheila Rafi. And number six, accepting the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint maternity replacement math teacher at the middle school, Rebecca Takis, with a master's degree. Scott, did you want to mention anything, or...
She comes highly recommended for Middlesex Borough. I spoke to her principal, who said that she was particularly engaging with the kids, had a great relationship with the students, which is something, and also a very, very big passion for mathematics, which is rare to find. You have that combination. But anyway, so she's, we're fortunate that we were able to bring her on board. Unfortunately, she can't start until October 3, so until that time, we will be, I'll be placing a resolution on the next agenda to request retroactively that the board approve Dr. Chu to pick up the class, Algebra VII class, Algebra I for 7th grade class, that we really want to have covered by a regular teacher.
As in, like, extra, extra period, you mean?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be on the October 9 agenda, and I'll be sure to talk to the Personnel Committee in detail about that.
Fantastic. Okay. Number eight, we have four new after-school program assistants, and their names are there. You'll see. Let's see if there's anything else new. Number 16, we have the girls soccer position filled. And we, number 17, we're giving an additional assignment to Ms. Hawthorne in art, and...
She's for the middle school?
Correct. This was one we should have...
So was that to keep the class sizes down?
No, no, we, this is one that we should, we had, did budget for, but that we should have had approved in the summer, but it didn't come to me until late, so it was already considered.
But the math one, Ms. Finklin, that's because of class sizes. There were too many students in algebra, so she got an extra period.
No, 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 I haven't got, you'll get that resolution on the next agenda to reduce class size. No, we haven't been able to get to that yet.
Oh, okay.
Came after, came after the workshop meeting, and too late for the voting.
Oh, okay.
What is Ms. Finklin's, uh...
I'm sorry?
Why is Ms., why does Ms. Finklin have an extra assignment?
We had to reduce the 9th grade Algebra I classes in size, but that was something which Dr. Mr. Lassiter had approached me about already.
No, 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 but I didn't mention it at the last meeting, so I was just...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
...specifying that as opposed to Ms. Hawthorne. And then, yeah, that's, let's see, anything else new?
Twenty-two through twenty-seven.
Oh, yes, okay. Twenty-two through 27 is all new. Let's see. Approval of the CPAC para. Okay, I'm just reading this for the first time here. Oh, okay, so this person will go to the onsite monthly meetings with the parents on the 2017-18 school year. We have approval of a Chinese translator for this school year as well. And we have appointment of a home instruction bedside tutor, with two of them on the agenda, and a Saturday reading buddy para for Bartle Elementary. And approval of Conversation Cafe Bartle Elementary paras in those positions as well, and then a Read 180 training. There is six teachers listed under that. Okay?
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Judy?
I just have a comment. I'm really happy to see that we are providing Chinese translator for child study team meetings. I had brought up for discussion a while ago, other languages for other parents, because when you're working with a child study team and you're developing an IEP, it must be presented, I think, by regulation in their language, their first language. Do we have other translators for other...
We do. Actually, the company we use called IEP Direct does that for us. Actually, we'll do the translating.
Like, at the child study team meeting, how do we present the IEP with the parents at the child study team meeting for other parents who speak other languages?
Oh, well, we do have the translator sit in on the meeting. We do have the translator sit in on the meeting, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Spanish, Mandarin, these are the two most common languages.
Do the parents have to request that, or is it something that...
No, Suzie's been fantastic. She makes sure the child study team asks the parent first if they require translation services, and then we make arrangements around Ms. Lou or Dr. Esteban's schedule to make it work. Or sometimes we'll hire us up, and we'll release Dr. Esteban or Ms. Lou.
Great, great, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Judy? No? Okay. Seeing none, could we move on to policies? Ann?
Sure. Okay. One of our policies that we discussed at the workshop meeting, 5230, regards, in regard to late arrival and early dismissal, that is going back to committee to consider some changes proposed by various board members, and we'll be seeing it again once those changes have been reviewed. The other one that we considered last week, policy 2461, its amendments proposed by Strauss Esme, as we discussed, to a policy that deals with the responsibilities of sending districts and receiving districts, where special education students move from one district to another for whatever reason. This is a mandatory policy. The changes just track the language of the various statutes. I do want to read in one change, which I'd like to recommend. The second paragraph, it's just a semantics thing. "The receiving school will collaborate with the District Board of Education." I'd like to just re-insert the adjective "sending District Board of Education." I'll send that to Susan if that would be the best way to proceed. They, Strauss Esme just deleted an adjective, which I think makes it very unclear, but unfortunately, I didn't notice that until several hours ago. So I'm recommending that we pass it for first reading, with that one exception.
Sounds reasonable. Anybody else have any comments on that particular policy?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. So we will move on to equity and excellence. Therese isn't here. Rob or Ruth, do you have anything particular for that?
Nothing to report.
Okay. I'm going to add one thing that I just happened to know about, because I happened to run into Bruce Morgan at the gas station a few days ago. He was nice enough to let me know about an event that's actually happening tomorrow night at the Reform Church from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's being hosted by the New Brunswick area NAACP, of which Bruce is, I believe, the president, and in conjunction with an organization called Building One New Jersey. And the meetings, the title of the meeting is "School Integration and Funding Equity: Two Sides of the Same Coin," and I'm just going to read the description of it for anybody who may be interesting and interested in going. I'm going to do my best to attend tomorrow night. If any other board members want to come with me, please feel free. So again, it's tomorrow night, Tuesday, September 19, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Reform Church, which is at 19 South Second Avenue in town. It says, "63 years after the Brown decision, New Jersey is one of the most economically and racially segregated school systems in the nation, and not coincidentally, it boasts some of the nation's highest property taxes. These two forces have combined to exacerbate an already deepening crisis in high-poverty urban districts while driving up taxes, widening disparities, and fueling resentment in increasingly diverse middle-class suburbs. Tensions that have been expertly exploited by those seeking to benefit both politically and financially. Unless we grapple directly and meaningfully with the glaring issue of racial segregation in our schools and regions, we will be unable to understand and defend against the exploitation and tax on public education, educators, and the public sector in general. And the costs, both human and economic, will continue to rise. Building One New Jersey has convened a gathering of educators, civil rights, and community leaders from cities and suburbs on May 16 to discuss the opportunities before us to address both issues, school segregation and fair funding. On September 16, key leaders will reconvene to decide a course of action to achieve a lasting solution that moves us all closer to the ideals that we, as a nation and a state, aspire." I can't think of anything I'd rather do for a couple of hours on Tuesday night, so...
I'll be here.
And Scott has said that he will attend with me, so I'm very much looking forward to it. If no one else can attend, I totally understand. It's a huge...
What time is it again, Darson?
Tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Reform Church. And, you know, Scott and I will obviously report back next week, but this is kind of so in line with everything that we've been talking about and what we want to move towards, I thought it might be really advantageous to us to go and meet some other folks across the state who are, who are talking about these same issues, so...
Mr. Magaziner, I will be at the foundation meeting at 7:30.
Busy night tomorrow night.
Correct.
Okay, so that's the end of our reports, so we will move on to public comment. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes Kim's participation tonight, if Kim has anything to participate. Kim is good. Okay. So then we will move on to our action items. Let me get to the right place in my agenda. Okay. Wait. I'm having a hard time getting to the right place in my agenda. There we go. Michelle, could you move the curriculum and instruction items?
Yes. Okay, sorry. Scrolling. I would like to move items number one through six, and we are tabling the addendum. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Right. And do we need to, we don't need to add anything else in on the...
No, I do have to, we have to postpone the vote on one item.
Okay.
I'll do that now. Looking at number three.
Item number three, June HIB incident report.
D.
D.
C. I have that as D. About 16, 17, 12.
Twelve, right.
D.
So does, does someone have to move to table that?
Okay, so, yes.
So that'll just be part of the motion. We'll just read that in, and then it's just part of the motion.
I'm sorry, which one is? That's number, item number three, letter D.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Got it, got it. So Michelle is moving items one through six, with the exception of, on item three, letter D.
And the addendum.
Is being tabled.
Oh, yeah, and the addendum is also being...
And the addendum, correct. Thank you. Okay, so can we get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Sorry.
Ms. Byer? So, yes on one. Number two, yes, but I am abstaining from MNOPQRST. Number three, no on C, yes to the rest of them. And, oh, sorry, yes. Yes to four through six. Thank you, Mark.
Welcome.
Mr. Marusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes to, as to one, four, five, and six. As to number two, I vote yes on the report, with one exception, and that exception is, sorry. That exception is yes. Number two, item I, 1617-05, I vote no to so much of the report as concerns that incident. And on number three...
Let's see.
Yeah, I got it. I'm just, let me just, let me just take a look.
Thank you.
I took a look at notes.
On item three, I vote yes as to the report, with the exception of item C, that's incident report 1617-11. I vote no on the report insofar as it deals with that incident report. Thank you.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dean Nicola?
I'm sorry. So, Ruth abstained on 08, including M.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that, please?
This is so confusing, I'm sorry. The incident report, item number two, letter M. I thought that was the HIB report that I should abstain.
You should abstain on that one.
She can abstain on whatever she wants to as well.
She abstained for some other reason, perhaps?
What, which, I'm sorry. With the echo in here, it's a little difficult. Is that M as in mother, or N as in Nancy?
M as in mother.
Okay.
You have to abstain from M as in mother.
Yes, that's what I had assumed, and then she did, but she didn't. I thought, oh, God, maybe I have it wrong. Okay. We're good.
So just the one abstained item?
Okay. So I would like to vote yes on all the items, except I will abstain on letters M through T in item number two, as well as letter I. I am voting no.
To I?
To I, yes. In item three, I am voting yes on all items, except for letter C.
We're getting confused about the numbers here.
And, are you finished?
And I am done.
And is that, okay, is that an abstention or a no?
On which item?
Three, C?
I am voting no on item number two, letter...
Oh, hold on, you said abstain.
She was asking about three.
Okay, there are two no votes that I have. The abstentions are separate. I am voting no on item number two, letter I. I am also voting no on item number three, letter C. I'm abstaining on item number two, letters M through T.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry.
Ms. Pietrobono?
I am voting yes on one through four. No, one through six.
That you said a no on five and six? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
No, you're just voting yes.
I'm voting yes on everything under curriculum.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you correctly.
I have no complicated letters involved.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, just yes. Just a solid yes. Okay, so we will now move on to, what are we moving on to? To finance. Mark, can you please move the finance items?
Yeah, I'm just, this is going to be, I hope, more simple. I'm going to move in finance items number one through nineteen.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Marusty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dean Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Okay. Judy, could you please move the personnel items?
Sure. I am moving items one through twenty-seven.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No. Okay. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Marusty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dean Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
All right, and finally, Ann, could you move our policy?
Yes, I'd like to move that we adopt policy two, four, six, one for first reading. That's the one and only item on the policy agenda with the exception of the edit we discussed.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Marusty?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Dean Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roselwitz?
Yes.
Okay, and there's nothing to move for equity and excellence, so we will move on to our board liaison reports. Scott, do we have anything to report from our student rep? Do we need a new student rep this year?
No, it'll be Josh.
Okay.
Tomorrow, he's the meeting.
Okay, wonderful.
I hope you'll excuse me leaving early. I'm just about to faint.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, board members, thank you.
Michelle, you did recently have some communication for your...
Yes, I did.
HP-TV.
Was a little bit of a confusing issue, which was laid out and then resolved, so I'm not sure exactly how to report it.
Let everybody know.
Okay. So I received an email from Gary, who does HP-TV for us, and he had a concern about Verizon FiOS and their market penetration in Highland Park, making it difficult for us to have a fair contract, I suppose you would call it, through their service. So we have a state-level agreement, I understand, and he was concerned that it did not stand and that we would somehow be paying a higher price for the service. And I think that's how I understood the problem that he laid out. And he also had a concern about the videotaping that we were doing, that it was a little too far away for people who were having difficulty reading lips to understand. So he had suggested that we do more close-ups and so everyone checked their teeth before we started filming, and it's cool.
No kale salad before the meeting anymore.
Right. So there was a follow-up email, and it turns out that they had worked, both Scott and Gary had spoken, and they had worked it out so that there is no further concern about our contractual agreement or a change in finances or capabilities.
Great.
That was it.
All right. We like things that resolve easily. Rob, do you have anything for us from the ed foundation?
The first meeting of the school year is tomorrow evening, so I'll report next month.
Great. And Judy, anything from the Commission for Universal Access?
They are meeting tonight, unfortunately, so I will get an update from Tara in reporting next month.
Okay, wonderful. Scott, does Suzanne have anything for us from the library?
Nope. Next meeting will be October 23rd.
Okay. And I don't have anything new for shared services. Ruth, anything new for CPAC?
No. I just know that they're working on a schedule of meetings, and we voted on having somebody there, so if parents were bringing children that needed to be assisted, they'd get that assistance.
Great. And I know that we also got an email from Mina and Tara asking that all of the buildings put their calendars up on the websites to make it, because when they're trying to plan meetings, you know, there's nine gajillion things they have to consider when they're trying to plan a meeting, but one of the biggest things they have to consider when they plan a meeting is what other activities are going on in the buildings. And that's, you know, the easily, most accessible way for them to be able to plan that. So we're looking forward to all of the schools' individual websites being updated with calendars of events so that other groups can plan.
Yeah, that would be helpful to me also, to make sure that things are not scheduled for important religious holidays.
Absolutely. I'm meeting with the leadership team tomorrow. We're actually talking about both of those items.
Okay, great. Great. Let's see, so Sharice is not here for her to report on posoc, so hopefully we'll hear from her next month. And Anne's not here for human relations. Mark, do we have anything from the Board of Health?
Yes, we met last Thursday evening. Two small things came up, regarding the schools. One of them was a sense of satisfaction, general satisfaction from the Board of Health that after many years of them discussing the benefits of the high schools starting later, that we've, the district has at least begun the implementation of a later start date at the high school. They were very pleased with the report I gave them. The other item was that there may be some funds available from the Board of Health, specifically some fees that they've raised against cigarette, e-cigarette licenses. And they would like to use that for education on smoking. And they, I put them together with Scott to discuss both education in lower grades but also doing something with the teen center to bring in some smoking education.
Great.
So it's great, and the meetings are great, and it's well worth it. I learned a lot of stuff there that I wouldn't know about otherwise. They have high school student reps as well, and they're very good. So anyway, that's it. That's it from the Board of Health.
All right. Wonderful. Thanks so much, Mark. Rob, do you have anything from the Green Team?
Not at this time.
Okay. Me, delegates in New Jersey's school boards, I don't have anything specific. The next delegate assembly meeting is on November 18th, and we don't yet have any other resolutions for that delegate assembly. So as soon as I have those, hopefully I'll have them before our meetings for October and November, so we'll have time to discuss whatever those resolutions are. And for you guys, in case you don't know, it's kind of cool that New Jersey School Boards Association has what they call a delegate assembly. So each school board around the state gets to nominate a delegate and an alternate that can go to the delegate assembly and vote, and that's how the New Jersey School Boards Association as an organization adopts their policies. So boards, and our board in the past has submitted resolutions to the delegate assembly, and then the delegates from all over the state get to vote on those, and then if they're adopted, they become part of New Jersey School Boards Association policy, and then that's what their government relations folks are supposed to advocate for on behalf of school boards in Trenton. So it's a very cool way to kind of try to, you know, advance a board's policy agenda is through the New Jersey School Boards Association delegate assembly. So you'll get to hear more about that over the next few months. And then, let's see, next is Middlesex County School Boards. Rob, you got anything there?
No. The first thing that they did have was on September 12th, and I was not able to attend that one, but they're getting rolling again, so...
Yeah. I would have liked to have gone to that one, too, and it just, like that last week was...
On a Tuesday night, it was just sort of, came up very quickly.
It did. Okay. And I don't have anything specific for my president's report. We had talked about doing the board goals, and then last week was just kind of, there was so much going on, it just, it didn't seem like it was going to fit terribly well today. So as you can see, it's not on the agenda. So my plan is to distribute the action steps that Scott has already pulled out of the strategic plan for us over the next week, get those out to you guys, and then we'll talk about them at the first meeting, the first meeting in October. So I'd like to be able to push it back to then, and then I'll also use this opportunity to let you know, you guys know, I won't be at the second meeting in October. That falls on the Monday after the weekend that I have to be in Oakland, California for the conference for my job, so I will not make it back in time from California to be here for that Monday night's meeting. So I'll be at the first meeting next month, but I will not be at the second meeting next month. And I'll let Anne know that, since she's not here now.
I just had a quick question.
Yes.
I think it involves the Green Team, but I'm not 100% sure. So in my social media travels, I came across the Highland Park Parents Group. They were discussing nutrition with the Breakfast After the Bell program, and there was some concern by two or three parents about the amount of sugar that was involved in the breakfast. It didn't seem like a heck of a lot of sugar to me, so I think this is really a subjective thing. Everyone seemed to be grateful for the program, but they had aired out the possibility that a board member who had laid eyes on this might want to just mention it to the rest of the board to see if there was any concern from, you know, the community at large. They were concerned about things like juice. That was one of their items of sugar concern. And to me, that was like, kind of, you know, of all the things that have sugar in them, I mean, it was benign. But again, it's a subjective thing, and I understand that some parents kind of...
I could speak to Pom Tony and just express our concern or interest.
Have you heard any concerns?
No, I haven't. Nothing's come to my attention.
That's kind of one of the things I, you know...
I felt like it was my job to kind of bring that to everyone and just to, you know, express my lack of concern, you know, personally, that there's a lot of different opinions out there is something that we kind of, of course, understand, but whatever. I think the program was well-received. It didn't sound like anyone was complaining about the program.
Okay.
All right. Did my job.
Well, if anybody has a concern, they could, of course, come to me or the person.
That's what I was hoping you would say, on camera.
I'd be glad to address the concern.
Okay, so for everyone out there, if they do have concerns, contact the superintendent.
Okay. So we're going to move on to old business. Scott, you're going to give us an update on the class size issues?
I do. Speaking of concerns, at our last meeting, we discussed the class sizes in the middle school, especially in social studies, sixth grade, social studies, and Spanish being high, as well as gym. At the next board meeting, I'll be recommending a resolution to provide sixth-period compensation for one of our teachers so that we can reconfigure the schedule and bring our class sizes down to numbers that would have our largest classes be 26. And I'm only looking at two social studies out of five classes, two of those classes being 26 in sixth grade, the others would be 24, 25, 24. And our Spanish sections would come down to only one section being 26. The others would be 25, 20, and 23. Overall, we would see numbers that are more than mid-20s, low to mid-20s. Fortunately, only having to compensate one teacher for sixth-period pay. So I'm going to come back to the board on October 9th with that resolution. The other thing that I was encouraged to do by some members of the board was look at how we might be able to manage the numbers of students in our gym classes more effectively. And Ms. Washington and Mr. McGlynn have agreed to split the gym classes in grades six, seven, and eight so that they're each supervising separate groups as opposed to putting all of the students in one large group. So we'll see how that goes, and I think, you know, the testament to how effective it is will be to see if our discipline infractions are fewer. Any questions?
I have a question about the phys ed program. If they were to separate them out, how many students would be in each group?
Roughly 30 to 35, depending on the class size, on the period.
Okay. And in the past, I had heard that they were being separated out by gender as well when it came time to discuss sex ed and personal hygiene. Is that still happening?
So I'm going to be reporting to the curriculum committee on exactly how we approach health education, and I have a chart that I'm developing, so I could wait to answer that question until I meet with the committee in a week. That would be helpful. And you can just report out to the full board on the results.
Very good. Thank you.
Scott, could I add something to the discussion?
Please.
Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. The discussion on gym is the discussion of the teams that we had via email. The volleyball, which was just started, is up to 34 participants, which is fabulous, but that's a large number for a group with, for a team with one coach, particularly since the numbers are high enough that it's probable that we'll have a varsity and a junior varsity team, because 34 students can't really participate in a varsity only, as Rob had pointed out. So we're going to recommend having an assistant coach, but I also discussed with Scott, looking at all of the teams, not just going ahead and hiring everything, every person that's been on the co-curricular activities, addendum to the contract, but looking at each team and how many participants we have and how many coaches and assistant coaches, because we have 34 students taking this new program. Some other program probably is not as full as it might have once been, and maybe there are four coaches and assistant coaches, or three when there needs to be a one-head coach or one head coach and one assistant. So just a way to look at things, and I think you're going to talk to Mr. Girvin about that.
I am. I'm going to task him to do an audit of the ratio of students to players to coaches. Yeah, our volleyball team has 34 kids who all practice at the same time, so Mr. Scolfani has had his hands full. I'm learning more about volleyball as this plays out, and what I've come to learn, thanks to Mr. Magaziner's question, as to how many, about how many kids can actually play at one time, I've learned that up to 24 girls can play, six players on the court at any one time, but there could be 18 substitutions in a game. So that still means we would have 10 girls not playing at varsity level, likely playing at the JV level. There is a JV league for volleyball.
And if I could just add, I actually had a really long conversation with Mr. Scolfani about this in gym on Friday, and he's really excited about how much participation there is, but he also expressed possibly a freshman team as well, because they actually have enough freshman girls on the team, you know, in the group, to have their own team as well as a junior and, you know, varsity team. So I think it's, I mean, it's really positive, I think, because these are lots of people who didn't play sports before who are now playing sports, which is great. And, yeah, there's a lot of, you know, freshman interest, which is always a good thing for the teams. Lots of teams don't have that this year, so.
I do appreciate the finance committee's support.
I was just saying, I heard they've done really well, too.
They're 3-0, incidentally.
That's pretty cool.
I think you pointed out.
Fabulous. Okay. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to talk about in old business? Nope. So new business, actually, there is one thing I would like to bring up that actually just came up since we put together the agenda, so I'm sorry it's not on there, but I just wanted to mention, and I mentioned this to Scott already, I think it was on Thursday or, I think it was late on Thursday, I was just on social media and noticed that Senator Deignan, our senator here in our legislative district, put something up on his Facebook page saying that he was responsible for putting forward an appropriation in this year's budget of $1.5 million that any district in the state could tap into, and that that money was specific to a program called Learning Ally, which is an adaptive technology for students who have learning disabilities, visual impairments, and it basically, it reads material for students. So Learning Ally is more specific to like textbooks and books, so not so much, like there are other programs that do things, like you could scan any document into it and it'll read it, because it just does a, like, you know, it's going to be read to you by a computerized voice. The amazing thing about what Learning Ally does is it's all actually recorded human voices. So all of these books and textbooks, they're actually having people read them in, and then the student can sit there, they can be presented with the book in front of them, it will highlight sentence by sentence as they hear an actual person read it to them. So this made me all kinds of reclamped as the, you know, the parent of a, you know, a dyslexic child that has struggled my... child that has struggled mightily with reading and thinking of how helpful that kind of technology could be to her and to other students like her. So, I called up... I actually called the senator directly and left a message on his cell phone because I'm just that person, and called his chief of staff as well, you know, who I've worked with, both of them on numerous other issues, but just to thank them and say, this is amazing. You know, like, I'm a school board president. I pay attention at the state level. I've got a kid who's dyslexic, and I didn't know about this. So, if I don't know about this, who does know about this? So, we talked... His chief of staff put me in touch with the gentleman who runs the outreach program for Learning Ally. He was totally excited at the idea that there'd be a district out there that, you know, may be able to help them out with getting the word out there. And then, I got a call today that I forwarded to Scott from Senator Deignan. I got my own message back saying, you know, like, let's do something. Let's put something together. So, Scott is looking into getting the program for the district. The way it works is for the first year, it's completely free, like, no cost whatsoever. So, the district would get to basically take it for a test drive and see how it works, see if it works for the kids, see if it's helpful. Second year, it's 50% of the cost. Third year, if you like it, you buy it. So, it's, to my mind, if it's free for a year, we're crazy not to take a look at it, let the teachers and students use it, interact with it, see how they feel about it, and, you know, maybe use that as an opportunity to do some work with the senator and with Learning Ally to get the word out about this to other districts. So, that's one of the things I got to...
Great. Great job.
Thank you.
My pleasure. See? Good things do happen on Facebook. They do. All right. Does anybody else have anything that they'd like to...
No. I don't know if this belongs under new or old business because we talked...
Well, it's going under new now because old's...
Talked about it a little bit last week, was the homework and technology issue. And I was wondering, Scott, could you fill us in on... We're a week in now, and so, I don't know if that group, the task... It's not called the Task Force anymore.
It's called the Task...
It is called the Task Force.
Oh, it's now called the Task Force.
Committee. So, I did send a directive to all teachers to suspend their use of any technology tools for homework until the task committee, made up of community members, teachers, some principals, can meet and develop a plan to go forward to be sure that kids of access, technology is used productively, not just for rote or repetitious practice, and then come back to probably the equity and excellence at curriculum committees. It'd be wonderful if I can get both committees together in a room together and then talk about that proposal. So, that meeting's going to happen in October.
Okay.
And then, hopefully...
Sorry. No. I was going to do a follow-up with our seniors. So, does that mean you guys don't get any homework at all or what?
No. Well, what I would say is...
How have things changed for you?
We haven't seen a huge change in terms of that. I mean, lots of my homework so far hasn't actually been necessarily online. It's been lots of taking notes from textbooks and stuff. You know, teachers are always pretty good about providing the paper copy if you need. And teachers are always open about whether or not we have, you know, outside of just technology in general, whether we have concerns. But I guess I would say overall that in the high school, we've seen less of a... I mean, it's not as broadcast, if you will. Like, we, you know, they didn't make an announcement, we'll no longer be using Google Classroom. And there's still teachers who are asking to turn, you know, if you'd like to turn your assignment in online, you may do so. You can also turn it in, you know, as a hard copy. So, I guess that's what I would say.
Well, your directive, Scott, oops, pardon me, that doesn't preclude a teacher from saying, I'll accept an assignment either online or not online, does it?
No. I mean, we do have students who much, much more prefer to use an online version of something. And I would not prohibit them from doing that. I think we all agree around the table and the district that technology is important. And at some point, we're going to have to figure out how we can...
I just wanted to make sure.
...to use it.
And so, with regard to homework that is assigned that may be found online, the teachers will find out, okay, anybody need a paper copy of this?
I feel like we need to put a stop on things. Just take a step back, pause, reflect, and then move forward.
Olivia, I think I interrupted you. So, please go ahead.
Just like to kind of add on to what Julia was saying, a lot of teachers have been expressing that we should start using a lot... There are online textbook versions a lot more, which, you know, they do offer us, you know, they do allow us to bring the textbook home if we need to. But they are trying to push us more towards the online textbook. And I've seen that a lot in my classes personally. So, maybe if we could just like talk to the teachers and make sure that, you know, it's okay to have both. But they are stressing the use of the online textbook a lot more than they used to.
I don't think I'd fare well with an online textbook.
I don't.
Yeah. I don't.
Well, the online textbook's incredibly convenient when you have a textbook that weighs like 30 pounds, which is the case for many of the textbooks in the district, unfortunately. So, you know, students do enjoy that. And sometimes, if, you know, I don't know, it's convenient if you are not at home and you're trying to do your homework. So, I think that actually, personally, I prefer a paper textbook. But actually, I think the majority of students probably like the online textbook just because of the convenience.
Right. Yeah. I think that is the amazing thing of having the option of both. But we always do have to make sure we've got that.
Can you highlight with an online textbook?
It depends on the book. Depends on the... The psychology textbook, you can.
Yeah. If you're... But if you're referring to internet equity, I would stress the importance of still providing those textbooks and making sure that teachers are completely okay with bringing those home.
Awesome. All right. Anybody else have anything?
No.
Nope? All right. So, public comment? Kim, we good? We're good. All right. So, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.